Be used, yeah. Like a chat GPT, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Like asking people, like whenever you start, and they're like, they're managing like public works, let's say, or they're doing all that kind of stuff. And you get to the Skynet Terminator stuff and you're like.
That's, that's a little creepy there.
Yeah, because it could happen. I mean, honestly, I mean, right now, where you're seeing a lot of cybersecurity stuff focused on fully AI.
The stuff you see out there. I was watching the news last night.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission in order on Monday, December 8th at 2:25 at 7:00 PM. Gina, roll call, please.
Rocco Gonzalez.
Here.
Mark Kleisner, Mark Piantek. Mayor Hagedorn.
Here.
John Boardman.
Here.
Chuck Watson, Chad Briggs, Carolyn Witt.
Here.
Mike Wood, Ken Shear.
Here.
Erin Beck.
Here.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order on our agenda for this evening is the proclamation, proclamation recognizing Tom Holdmeyer. And I know his family is all here. Please come up to the podium and the mayor will present and read that proclamation. Okay. Thanks for coming, you guys. It's an honor to read this. Honoring the life and service of Tom Holdmeyer. Whereas the city pauses with deep respect and gratitude to honor the life of Tom, a dedicated public service whose recent passing is felt by all, who had the privilege of knowing and working with him. And whereas Tom began his distinguished service to the community as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission in April of 99, and through his leadership and sound judgment, was appointed chairman in June of 2003. A position which he served with integrity, professionalism, and a steadfast commitment to responsible community development. And whereas Tom further contributed to the city's progress through his service as a board member of the Washington 353 Redevelopment Corporation from December 2012 to March 2023, and continued to lend his expertise as an advisory member in March of 23. And whereas Tom also served the broader community as a member of the Washington Area Chamber of Commerce Board from 2008 to 2016, and his chair from 2015 to 2016, helping to strengthen partnerships and promote the long-term success of the Washington area. And whereas throughout all his service roles, Tom embodied the qualities of a true civic leader. Commitment, humility, fairness, fairness, and a sincere desire to help his community thrive. And whereas Tom's legacy will endure through the many improvements he helped shape, the respect he earned from colleagues and residents, and the meaningful impact, his lifelong dedication to public service. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city honors and remembers Tom for his decades of dedicated service, leadership, and devotion to the community, and extends heartfelt condolences to his family, friends, and all who mourn his loss. In witness thereof, this proclamation is issued with appreciation for a life spent in service and a legacy that will not be forgotten. Thank you, Mayor and family. And you all are excused, but if you want to sit and listen to hear what goes on at a meeting, you're more than welcome to. Okay, that's fine. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 10th meeting. Motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to approve the November 10th meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Next item on the agenda is the election of a co-chair. And I would like to nominate Rocco as our co-chair. And entertain that as a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded that we elect Rocco as our co-chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Welcome and thank you.
I can't fight it now. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is file number 25-1201 preliminary plat for Grant Lake Estates, plat three. Aaron?
Good evening, Commissioner. This is a minor subdivision of two unplatted tracks. And the applicant is wanting to only plat one lot here. We'll get a full picture here, maybe? Maybe? There we go. Yeah, so they're wanting to plat one lot here, which is this lot three. And this is being done to preserve the, the house here. And the applicant wants to sell off the rest of this land to another buyer. So this is just so they can maintain their house and sell off the rest of the land. Any questions?
Any questions for Aaron? I did point out, I talked to Aaron the other day about that under the analysis that the applicant is an engineering firm. And that's not the case unless that Mrs. Otto got her engineering firm. I don't think that's the case here. So just to clarify that, just so everyone knows, keeping everything open there. Any comments from commissioners?
Makes sense to me.
Straightforward? None, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we approve file number 25-1201, the preliminary plat for Grand Lake Estates, plat three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Next item on the agenda. File number 25-1202, a special use permit at 432 MacArthur.
Yes, so this is a detailing business that's looking to go in at that highlighted parcel on the map. This is off Fifth and MacArthur. And usually detailing businesses are permitted use in the commercial C2 district. In this case, the C2 overlay. But we, there's a provision in our zoning code that says if this use is within 50 feet of a residential district, then it's a special use permit. So as you can see, there's a home to the north that's in the R1B district. And so this is a, they require a special use permit. Didn't look like it was going to be too extraneous. The applicant is here tonight if you want to hear from him and, yeah.
Okay. Any comments from commissioners?
Just a question about parking, I guess, a little bit. Will the business be using any street side parking?
I guess you want to, do you call anyone, come up and answer that?
Please state your name and address.
Was that the address for the business?
Your actual. Your actual?
My actual. I just moved to Manchester, so I'm still remembering it. But it's, I think it's 15970.
And your name?
Colin Blackmore, sorry.
Thank you.
This is new to me.
That's new to me too, so we're good.
I can state the whole address real quick for you. If she needs it. That's 15970.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, we're okay. I'll hold it up if anything.
That's okay.
The parking, so we have spots, pretty much everything fits in the bay. So we pull everything in the bay and then I use the spots that are allotted to me in the front. The only time that anyone parks on the street is when a client is literally dropping off a car. And then I just walk out, grab the car and pull it inside.
So there's no like overnight cars sitting on the.
Nothing on the street, everything's in the business. We only schedule out about two a day. So everything that comes inside is under lock and key on the garage.
Will you be the only occupant of that building?
I have two other employees that are with me there, but they're just part-time help.
Okay, but you'll, you'll occupy the whole building?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, sorry, the whole, the building's shared. There's a, a heating and a cooling right next to us.
That's what I thought.
And then we're on the further end.
Okay.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors? Just.
I, I just had one neighbor walk out to me and ask me to turn on the music and I turned it down immediately. Well, that was, that was about it. Just filming it out.
Okay. Any other questions for Colin? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission on this matter? Okay. Hearing none? If you don't have any objections, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the special use permit.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded that we approve the special use permit at 432 MacArthur. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. And I believe that goes to council yet, right? So whatever that's scheduled. Do we know what that date is yet?
I think it's the 15th. If that sounds right to everyone.
December 15th?
I think so.
Okay. So it'll be on the council agenda for that?
Yeah.
Next item is file number 25-1203 preliminary development plan approval for Beaker Point, the PDR residential development.
Yes, so last month, we went through the, the sketch plan review of Beaker. Beaker was, at that time was Beaker Point, now it's Beaker's Point, which is a planned development residential that's aiming to be annexed into the city of Washington. And there've been a few changes to the development plan since then. And I will pull that up here. This is the, the latest, latest and greatest iteration of Beaker's Point. So we've got some street names now. Hunter's Hollow is the loop road around. And then Schulter's Close is the cul-de-sac coming up through the middle here. And still got 57 lots. Minimum lot sizes of 7,500 square feet and above. 25 front and rear yard setbacks, six feet side setbacks. And these, just a reminder, these streets are 30 feet wide. We've got a 40-foot right-of-way here and then a five-foot access easement on each side of the road. So in effect, it'll, it'll be 50-foot, 50-foot right-of-way, but just kind of structured a little differently there. Let's see. Street grades are 12 along. Most of Hunter's Hollow, and then it kind of flattens out here towards the bottom. And we also require turnarounds for lots 55 through 57 because they're along a major street. So we just have the, have the applicant have turnarounds. And that's not part of the planned development process. That's in our subdivision regulations. And I guess I can, let's, let's have Cameron talk about this one. Fill in the gaps.
Good evening. Cameron Lukin with Wonder Lake Surveying Engineering. So that was a good introduction by Aaron. I'll make sure I got my clicker going on here.
Is it going?
There we go. Yep. Okay, so thank you, Aaron, for the introduction. As, as Aaron said, the purpose is to annex the 18 acres as a PDR, 57 lots, single-family homes. And Vic's here tonight with us to answer any questions. This is just basically a continuation of his, of his successful building out there, Northern Star. Let's see. There we go. So does this have a pointer on it, I guess, too, right? Is that it?
Yeah, I think it's the.
Yeah, okay, perfect. So... Well, let's go speak. So it's south of the existing East West Parkway. And let me click the next one here so we can see it pop up. So that's the 18 acres there. So just not to dive way back into what we previously talked about, but basically we were constrained in an east-to-west fashion with the layout. And so that's what kind of launched us in, launched us into the PDR. I am not getting a little this thing here. There you go. You have any luck? There we go. I hope that went back, or did it?
No, it was, it was forward.
It's forward, okay.
You want here?
Okay, go ahead and go again, please. And again. Yeah, so as Aaron mentioned, those, that's the overall layout. And I guess, as I'd mentioned before, was the market had previously dictated basically cul-de-sac lots, but based upon the constraints of the property east to west, based upon the city's recent desire for higher interconnectivity, we worked with the city, Vic worked with the city to say, hey, here's what we can do that makes it kind of work out for everybody. And as Aaron had mentioned, on the west side there, you know, headed northbound, there's a 12% grade. Working with Charles at, at the city and whatnot, as you went around the northwest side and made that curve, you'd probably seen a previous plan where it was more of a, a sharper curve. And basically he said, hey, can we make that curve more gentle? Can we flatten the grade? We did all that. So going in there to the, basically the point of curvature begins to flatten out. So that way if EMS is headed northbound on that road, you know, they're not going through a 12% grade around the curve. So we got a viable plan for everyone there. That worked out well. And then on the outsides, the, on the outside, you'll see a, a red line. That red line is basically a no parking on the outside. We work with the city on that. As Aaron mentioned, it does allow for, you know, a flat, a five-foot area to... We took that out, never mind. As far as the water line, stormwater line, sanitary line, all that, as far as the buildability of all the houses, the kind of the outlines of all those houses are on that next, actually, meanwhile, I'm here. So back to the north side, along the south side, the east-west gateway, there's that big green area, that's some common ground there. There's a gas line that runs through there. There's also going to be a, you know, water control structure there. As far as interconnectivity goes back, that, that brown line between lots 11 and 12, that was a trail that was talked about. We worked with the city to get the trail nearly almost all the way to an ADA compliant trail, meaning that ADA compliant trail ramp is 8.3%. And we nearly got all of that run to that. To give you an idea, like out at Phoenix Park, some of that trail that's on the northern section is nearly 15%. So it's going to be much better than that. So I think we got a viable trail there. So I think we've done a pretty, I, I appreciate the city. There was a lot of back and forth with you guys. I think John knows a little bit about it, but perhaps some of the other people don't know. We've worked with the city for probably, this is probably going on three months now or so, something like that.
Yeah, just about, just about.
Yeah. So it's a lot of back and forth, but I think at the end of the day, I think it's a good project, a great project for the community, and I think it's going to work out well. Any questions? From me or the builder?
Thank you for taking that bump out, out of there. Taking that bump out.
Yeah.
I think that really does help with the flow around there. And I'm sure the street department appreciates that. And I'm trying to figure out where to go with the snow in that space.
Yeah.
Did we work out anything on the maintenance of the hill?
Yeah, so it's still being talked about, but basically the, the last meeting we had was, we had the trail at about 10%. And, and Charles is like, hey, can we get it down to manageable standards? So as you can imagine, these guidelines for trails in a urban area versus Aurora area versus the... So I guess what I'm saying is, John, we're working towards making a publicly, if we build it to the city spec, then the city would own, operate, and maintain the trail is where we were headed. Now, that's open for discussion, but we thought it might be confusing if you had a publicly maintained street, then a privately maintained trail, then a publicly maintained street. We were just trying to make it all public if we can get it built to the specs the city desires, is what our thoughts were.
Because I know there was some discussion at our last meeting about that and whether or not the city would take that over. So I was just curious if that had been resolved or not yet.
I think we're getting there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to have some conversations with the Parks Department and Street Department and just see where we're all at with all that. So, yeah, there's, there's still some work to do on that matter.
One of the other things, just for the rest of the commission, that I also was concerned about was the elevation in relation to the water system. So I called Kevin and found out that water pressure should be about 40 PSI on those houses at the top of the hill at Beaker Road. So that's okay. It's not optimal. I noticed there's a couple hydrants up there towards the top of that. But just so the commission knows that there will be enough water pressure out there to work the system. Any other questions for Cameron? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? Yes, ma'am, come on up. State your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Janet Roth. My address is 2336 Matthias Close in Washington. Our house is directly on the other side of East West Parkway from this planned development. And we moved in approximately a year and a half, well, a little less than a year and a half ago in September of 2024. And we were pursuing and negotiating the purchase of the house in early 2024. And at that time, this development was not disclosed to us. The East West Parkway was mentioned, and we had inquired about what was going to be developed around us, especially because one of the things, the top of their list on the features for Stonebridge is the stunning views. I think it'd be hard to argue that a huge development behind us is going to be a stunning view, replacing what we have currently. Now, we're not naive enough to think that that area was never going to be developed, but had we known, had it been disclosed to us, that that was a planned development at that time, we would have chosen to build elsewhere. And I know some of our other neighbors feel the same. One of our neighbors has uncovered information that this has apparently been in the planning stages since well before 2024 when we were negotiating. And we do feel like that it shouldn't proceed until that has been addressed with us and then resolved accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this?
Hello, my name is Sandra Ailey, and I live at 2332 Matthias Close. This is the first time I heard from Aaron that there was going to be a development behind me. But honestly, with 10 houses on Matthias Close, that's kind of a small group of voices that probably won't make a difference. I know this development was planned, or at least discussed, in 2023 at the end of the year. And I, I think it's great in, in respects that it kind of joins in the rest of the neighborhoods, but at the same time, I feel a little disappointed that out of all the communications I've had with the Realtor and some with the builder, that it was never disclosed. I'm okay with it because, you know, progress has to go forward. I know it's been a long time coming. But the tree line is probably all we have left to have some stunning view left. And I would appreciate if the builder would consider maintaining that as much as they can and perhaps even incorporate some green space besides the trail, maybe coming off the trail. A little green space might be nice, like a little park with a, some, where kids can play in a playground or something, just to kind of make it more family oriented and not so dense. It just looks very dense from looking at the map. But I wish them good luck. And I, I hope it all works out that we still have a beautiful place to live.
We do too. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
My name's Matt Masterson. I live at 1425 Beaker Road, so I'm just on the south side there, straight across. I just had a concern for lots 55 through 57 with the driveway entrances trying to come off Beaker. So I've lived out there about 10 years now. And pretty much everybody and their brother, when they get to that straight stretch, whether they're going east or west, hits the gas and it's a daily occurrence. I mean, there, there's people do 60, 80 miles an hour on that straight stretch. In addition, pretty much we get four to six runoffs a year. Several in, in my front yard. Fortunately, they haven't taken out the trees too much. It's mainly in the winter time, too, that these occur because of the slight curve of Beaker coming up the hill there. That seems to catch some people. And if they drop a tire, they're going off. There, there's, there's just no other spot to go. I have seen vehicles also go off the other side and literally spin around where lot 55 and 56 out into that field. So, you know, it's still a possibility there. Would it be in a county road yet, too? As far as speed limits, I don't think would really make a difference. So I just have a concern for those three driveway entrances, people trying to back out and just the fact that it's pretty much a freeway through there yet to this day. A lot of people cut through there to Union on a daily basis as well now, trying to avoid 47, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there any else, one else in the audience that would like to speak to this?
Evening, guys. My name is Jeffrey Roth. I also live at 2336 Matthias. The first young lady was my lovely bride. First, I want to say real quick to you, Aaron, I communicated with you via email. I was very impressed with your response time. I mean, it was, we used to live in the area when we left and came back. We came back to Washington for a reason. And the only thing that I would like to add is I know we're not going to, two people are not going to stop this development. Progress has to be progress. We were a little bit taken aback when we found out that this was in the works before we spent our rather substantial lot premium. And we love our view and we know it's going to go away. But I just hope somewhere in the notes, if the only thing we can add and hopefully do is like the second young lady said, keep the tree line in. I hope this will allow for that. Because, you know, the joke I made when we bought the lot, which there was nothing there 15 months ago when we moved in, my front door, I'm looking at roofs. I'm cool with that, I expect that. My backyard, I used to call it heaven and for another probably six months I will. And then, then I also thought, too, we'd be done with the construction phase. Well, now we probably have two more years of that we get to listen to. But again, that's progress. But we, again, we were aware of the East West Parkway easement, and we know eventually it'll probably go through. I hope, I'm long dead before that does, but progress will be what progress will be. I just hope, again, that a note could be added that hopefully that the existing trees that are there, because they're right at the edge. So I don't know how far down the hill they're going to come with these 57 homes. But that would take some of the sting out of a rather substantial lot premium. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this?
I would.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I would like to thank you all for coming because even if, you know, you're not necessarily stopping the tide, it's always good to be able to express your opinion. And I'm glad to know that the city paid attention, that they responded to you because that doesn't, in the past, that's often, well, occasionally it doesn't happen. And it's, it's really good that you get recognition by city employees, who are terrific and work hard. And I like to second that about the trees. I'm a tree person. And we have a tree board. And so if in any way we can help the developer work with that... I remember when, when they built the parking lot for, where they took the lot out there across from the doctor's building, I spoke up for the trees, real trees, not foo-foo trees. So I would appreciate if, I think that is a viable response to request. And I hope that they will consider that because so often these developments, you come in and especially if it's a, it's a open field, you don't have anything to save. But at the same time, landscaping takes an awfully long time. And it's nice if you can treasure some of that we have. So that's my, that's my tree. And it's nice if you can treasure some of that we have. So that's my, that's my tree spiel tonight, so.
Cameron, would you come back up to the mic, please?
Yes, I'll answer Carolyn's question in the, related to the common ground. So thank you, Aaron, for pulling that up. So you can see there, you've got about two point six acres of common ground. And so that's the area that we'll have to, in the bottom down there where that detention basin is shown, we'll have to disturb the grass down there. It's hard to see it, but along the north side, there's that tree line that's, they're mentioning. Yeah, there you go, Aaron, yes. And that's, the only planned excavation of those trees would be to build the trail. I take that back. There's going to be a sanitary sewer run through there. So there's going to be a couple penetrations for the trail and/or basically infrastructure for the sanitary sewer and the trail. But we can be careful to, I mean, obviously, we don't want to tear down any trees more than we have to because it's, to your point, it's an amenity. But I just wanted to, there's almost, there's well over ten percent of common ground being set aside, which is pretty unique in this case, you know, so I think that's.
I'm grateful to see that.
Yeah, yeah. So we're going to be cognizant of that, trying to keep that tree line as much as we can.
Aaron, do you have the aerial view? I think we probably saw it in one of the first last month, maybe, where it showed the, showed that creek and that tree line a little bit more. We could maybe get an idea of where that's at?
Or, I guess I'm not, just, just on maps, or, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. So which tree line are you referring to? That one there?
Yes.
Okay. So where do these residents live then in relation to that?
That's right there.
Okay, okay. Thank you for pulling that up.
I think it makes sense. I mean, agree to everyone that the commission said around preserving trees, preserving landscape. I mean, we don't want to mess up the heavenly view that we talked about, right? But I do think it just requires a conversation really with, whether it's the Parks and Recs Department, whatever the city would be, for how we can then develop this common space because I, we could do a lot of things with it. Let's see, technology, mayor, isn't it great? But I do believe there's a lot of opportunity for what we could do with that space. Obviously, we've talked a lot about Phoenix Park, and, I mean, I frequent that park quite often. But it seems like a pretty good blueprint, you know, having a very, pretty non-invasive walking trail from the subdivision into the park. I think it's just figuring out how do we do this well. So as long as we keep continuing the discussion with the city, I don't see why it would be an issue.
Just so the commission knows, this is a PDR, so we can require them to add tree buffers or whatever along that if, if we want. And I was just, that, that view is phenomenal there, just to give you an idea. So in that green common space, say to the north of the water retention, I see you have a gas main there, so that's, that's, is there a right-of-way there? How big is that right-of-way?
Fifty feet.
So you'd have to stay off of that?
Yes.
So could we go to the north of that with the tree line?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, is that something that you might consider?
Yeah, we could absolutely look into it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think conversation is good.
Right, I think so too.
Because, you know, whether or not it's, it's viable, but at the same time, if you're talking about it, at least you're making a recognition.
Sure.
That, so this is good.
And, and I'm, I'm not thinking of, you know, a tree that's only going to get ten feet tall. I'm thinking of oaks or something that would be more substantial. Yeah, you folks may not be able to see it, you know, in your lifetimes yet, but it would be something that, you know, for the future generations would have some, some kind of a buffer maybe along that line. So I guess my question with that then to the commission is, do we require that because we can do that on the PDR? Are we comfortable with letting the discussions go as they are and trust that the developer and we'll get that worked out?
One, one hates to make arbitrary decisions, but at the same time, encouragement. You know, do we, do we need to make a ruling, or can we just encourage and have good faith? I don't know. What do you think? I'm more naive than your average person, so.
Well, since this is a PDR, I think if we want to have the trees there, I think we need to require that.
Okay.
I think so. I think if they're willing and wanting, excuse me, with like the ongoing communication, it would be appropriate to just make it a specification, like a requirement. That'd be wanted from what all of the different residents have said north of there. And just knowing, I think, for our vision of what, from the interconnectivity piece with the walking trail, this can continue to be kind of like those, the condos, the duplexes that we keep approving. Hopefully, a blueprint for what we can do in the future as we see more and more voluntary annexations happening in Washington.
Ms. Cameron, I think there would be enough room there, wouldn't there, in the property line yet to plant some trees north of that gas line easement?
Yeah, there is a section that's north of the gas line easement outside that, that could, could accommodate some trees, yes.
Can you show it on that view that we're looking at right there?
Yeah, Aaron's on it pretty close right there. So you can almost see the mole line, you know, right there on the south side where maybe perhaps the gas line came through. I don't know. Yeah, Aaron's highlighting it right there. So the area north of that would be the area that would be.
And that's where you're going to be keeping some trees anyway, correct?
Yeah. Like I said, the, all those trees that are along that, there's no intention for us to take them out.
Right. It's just the ones south of there that like cut, kind of like, you know, southeast, just because that's in the middle of the lot.
Yeah, those trees based on grading will come out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And those are low enough that those would not be the high-value trees for the screening you'd want anyway.
Right, right.
Um, because you'd be looking over top of them anyway. So the, the trees that are closer to the north line would be more advantageous.
So would it be appropriate that we require Missouri native trees and to get together with the tree?
Yes, the Urban Forestry Board.
Division?
We have people.
Work out some type of an arrangement that would be applicable?
A consultation.
Yeah, so.
Poor Cameron.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to, you know.
Yeah. And so if it's any reasonable request, you know, is, is, is what we're looking for, right? And when you look at how the drip lines of oak trees mature, or, you know, they, they don't, they're not like they're every eight feet.
Right, right.
So as long as we understand that, you know, this is a twenty-five-year plan, and not an immediate screening type thing.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we're okay with that, I think.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want you to just put up a couple of evergreens that in ten years from now are going to be gone.
Right.
You know, we're talking something more substantial.
Yep.
How does that sound with the rest of the commission?
Makes sense. I mean, we've, they've already had, like I said, really strong communication with the city. So it's really just some, a way of maintaining that with a little bit of structure from us.
Vic, horse camp. Um, just so you know, we like to keep all the trees we can to. And one, one thing that I'd like to consider is to the east of our property are, yeah, and I think which is behind some of the folks in Stonebridge is not our property. I, not, I think that line, just so you know, there's some of it that it's either owned by the city or, I think, Bart Pepsl. So we wouldn't have any control there, but the rest of it, I think.
So you're talking about that larger forested area right there where he's kind of going through, correct? Yes?
May, maybe I'm wrong in saying that. I see that line now that Pepsl's okay, so it is further east, so not an issue. But it is, I guess, the city's property comes right along there, so.
Yeah, the city owns this, yeah, this is future East West Parkway right-of-way, right here, directly to the east. And that is, that is fairly, fairly wooded in there, so.
So some of those houses at the end of that cul-de-sac would lose their backyard shrubbery when the East West Parkway would go through there?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vic. And Cameron. Any other questions for Cameron or Vic?
I guess the only other condition I was recommending that the, the commission put on this, this PDR was mandating that these lots fifty-five through fifty-seven have thirty-foot setbacks, you know, because we require the turnarounds. And, you know, these are pretty substantial turnarounds, and it will do the trick. But just, and these, these lots fifty-five and fifty-six are already set back thirty feet. But just requiring those lots to have a thirty-foot setback would, I believe, is appropriate, and we've, staff has talked about that, so.
So Aaron, those three lots, they won't have to back out onto Beaker Road when they're leaving, is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's good.
Good. Okay, so basically then we would entertain the PDR following the recommendations of staff on the second page and a requirement to work with the Urban Forestry Committee and develop a tree line buffer along there of Missouri native trees to kind of buffer the other residential neighborhood in Stonebridge from that. Does that sound okay to everybody?
That sounds good. I'll move that.
Okay, motion.
We do that.
I'll second that.
And seconded, that that's what we include with the PDR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have. Thank you, Vic and Cameron, for putting this together. I think we've, between the conversations, I think it's going to be a great development again. Thank you.
We still got the annexation next.
Oh, we do, don't we? So next item on the, on the agenda is the annexation of eighteen point one acres, file number twenty-five two oh four, which is this piece of property.
Yeah, so, I mean, pretty much everything we just talked about, two, two tracks coming in as one for Beaker's Point, as, as we've talked to death here, proposed zoning is a planned development residential, so. Yeah.
And Beaker Road will continue to be a county road, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, the Special Road District, I believe, has maintenance.
Yeah, that's right. Any questions from the commission? Is there anybody in the audience that would wish to address the annexation? Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
I entertain, I, I move that we accept the annexation, the voluntary annexation request.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded that we accept the annexation request for eighteen point one acres of Beakers, is it Beaker?
Beakers, Beakers Point.
Beakers Point.
PDR. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And that goes to councilman for approval again, I guess, on the fifteenth. Okay. All right. Uh, next item is the annual comprehensive plan implementation update.
Yes, so this is something that I've been working on for a while. So I believe a couple of months ago, Sarah and Aaron gave a update about how the implementation of our comprehensive plan that we adopted a couple of years ago was going. And I was looking through the implementation items and for, for the comp plan when I first came on with the city. And one of those was to create a, a reporting measure. And so what I'm about to show you is that reporting measure, and this is the Grow Washmo Implementation Dashboard. This is a website that is linked to the city's website, currently accessible to the public on the comprehensive plan page. So this is a website that tracks every single goal and strategy and action item for the comprehensive, for Washington, Missouri's comprehensive plan. And so how it's set up is you've got the action item, the desired, the original implementation timeframe, the department that is responsible, and then how, 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 how close we are to getting this thing done. So as, as I said, one, the, the first goal is establish an outcome reporting system, and that's this, this dashboard. So I won't go through it all. There's, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff in here. But in, in preparing this, I talked with Darren, Charles, Lori, Aaron, and the mayor. We, we, we talked as well. And, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of neat stuff in here. So I implore you all to go and give this a look sometime, and I can send you the link if need be. And I believe Aaron's here, if you want to. I don't know if you had anything specific to talk about, or?
Does Eric have any questions?
Yeah.
No, it looks good. I mean, obviously, it'll be good to see it. I feel like, as we've talked about it, right, we want to make sure it's not something, our implementation plan's not something that just hangs on a shelf. We want it to be very practical and very relevant. So the only thing I would say, because I'm a big fan of dashboards, do a lot for work, if you could create like a one-pager or something that you could be as condensed as possible to say, like, these kind of, you know, buckets, as you already have, but just basically say, like, maybe a red, yellow, green. And that could even be on the front page of the web, like some part of the website, which shows where we are, like red meaning not really started, yellow in progress, and green completed. Because then that would make it very easy for us to very easily see all the different action items at a glance.
Um, do you, you're, you're saying for each sort of subheading, you know, like for community history, we have, were, were this, this completed for all the goals? Was that kind of what you're, you're thinking, or?
Yeah, I know there's, there's a lot of an action item, so if it gets a little bit convoluted, but as much as you think would be appropriate, yeah, buy those headings. And then a group of like a dozen or so of the action items.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I hear you, I hear you. But anyhow, this is live, live on the website, so feel free to check it out. And I'll be updating this annually to semi-annually, so. And I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the book. I'm not, not ignoring it. It's on my desk, so.
So I have a question, though, and some of the, I know there were some short-term goals in there. Have those been handed off to the appropriate city departments for implementation and getting that done? Or, for instance, if there was, and I remember it's been a few months since I've looked at it, but well, the first one there, you got twelve, six months, and the next one's twelve months from the implementation. Well, we're already past that twelve months, and we're only twenty-five percent complete.
Yep.
So my point is, we should have been done a hundred percent of that particular item, one point two.
Sure.
Of today.
Sure.
See what I'm, see what I'm getting at? And I just don't want us to get so far behind that we don't keep it current.
Sure, sure.
Does that make sense?
Uh, yes.
Because we talked about it when we adopted this thing, that it was, we, we were going to have to have accountability for it.
And that's where I think if you create that one-pager, we just would know. So let's say if something takes twelve months, and like I said, if that, let's say the twelve months should have ended, as John's saying, like now, then that's a red or a yellow or something, just so we can have an under, basically have an understanding of, like I said, hasn't begun, in progress, and then it's completed. With those, then you could see, I don't know, we could talk offline about this.
Sure.
There's a lot of ways that we can do this, but we just want to make sure that, like John's saying, everyone's kept accountable.
It's getting done, yep.
And then the, the stuff's getting done.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah. And what I'll say is that, you know, when I went around everyone and said, hey, how's this goal progressing, usually compared to our, our last update that Aaron and Sarah prepared, we had made pretty significant progress in some, well, a lot of our, a lot of our, our goals. Once again, I, too much to get into specifics, but we're getting things done.
Well, and I know it's not high on the priority list probably because there's a lot of things that goes on day to day.
It snows, things happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Some of these topics evolve.
Yeah, right. I mean, and they're, they're not going to be, I mean, it's not like, oh, we have to get this, this, this. Some of these evolve, but we should, we should go ahead and, and mark which one of those that we said, eh, this kind of morphed into this goal. This kind of changed, and here's the reason why. You can provide some kind of. And that's why, that's our responsibility to make sure that we're, we're keeping that all meshed together as a commission. Yep. So, very good.
Yeah, there's, there's some of these that I've marked as like not interested, you know? We've, we've discussed the goal and just said, hey, this is, you know, there are better action items to, to focus our, our energy on rather than, you know, an outdoor athletics complex, athletics complex, you know? Never say never, but better places. athletics complex, athletics complex, you know, never say never, but better places to focus our energy, so.
Okay, very good, great. Any other questions from commissioners on this topic?
That's good.
Okay, moving on to the last item on the agenda, code changes. R one C zoning district code change recommendations.
Yes, so, I, you all had me do my homework last month, and I sent out a Excel spreadsheet about the specific changes that I was talking about, and I've kind of condensed my presentation from last month, and I'll just go over it with you real quickly, and then hopefully we can have a, a good discussion about, about this. So, as, as you all know, R one C is our single-family attached zoning district, and over the past year or so, staff has kind of noticed that there might be some issues with this district due to a variety of things, which I'll get into. So, when people are looking to rezone and subdivide their property from R two, they often run into a minimum lot size that is too large, which ends, ends up in them applying for a variance. This is often the case in the R two overlay district, where they allow six thousand square feet for duplexes, so if you chop that right down the middle, you end up with three thousand square foot lots. Now that's, there've only been like, one or two of those, but, you know, it has, it has happened before, so important to consider that. Another issue is the maximum lot coverage requirements. Are, the R two district does not have maximum lot coverage, but the R one C district has a thirty-five percent maximum lot coverage, so, you know, you can only use thirty-five percent of the lot to put buildings on, and this is not an issue that staff has run into yet, but it, it could be and probably will be in the future as, you know, the whole reason why this district was established was because, you know, condo financing was made quite difficult as a result of the two thousand eight recession, and it doesn't appear to be getting any easier, so, you know, I, I personally, I think, it's my professional opinion, that I expect more of these as time goes on. You know, ultimately, it, staff feels that there's excess bureaucracy involved with this whole process. You know, if you want to, you know, let's say you own a duplex, and you're like, okay, well, I just, I just want my land and my, my half of the house, and, you know, the other person can do, do with it as, as they will. Currently, you're going to need a rezoning, and you're going to need to subdivide your land, and that's not if you have any of these number of things, like your lot has, your lot is too small, so you need a variance for the lot coverage, or, well, I mean, you know, same, same for the minimum lot size. So, there, there are ways that we can fix some of this excess bureaucracy with a code change. And as, as I brought out, mentioned, mentioned last time, currently properties zoned R one C are dispersed amongst the R two areas around town. These properties have similar impacts, and there are cases, I think I pointed some out last time, where properties directly next to each other, you know, one property's zoned R one C, one is R one two, have the same floor plan. So, you know, from an impacts perspective, that's something that zoning is trying to mitigate, is the impacts of different properties to each other, and their, their impacts are often very similar. Over the past ten years, the P and Z department has received nine variances for properties in R ones, the R one C to bypass the minimum lot size, which is around ten percent of the total properties in R one C. I'm, I, I don't think there's any other zoning district that comes close to that, you know, that's, that's a pretty, pretty large percentage of your, your total number of properties. And just something of note, the average lot size for the properties that underwent a variance was four thousand five hundred square feet. That's much lower compared to the minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. And so, you know, that being said, you know, if these were the only things that, you know, were important to address, there would be a pretty clear-cut solution here, which is solution number A in your, your packet, and that would be reducing the minimum lot size and eliminating the maximum lot coverage requirements from the R one C district. There'd be a pretty clear-cut solution to, you know, stop any variances, or, to stop excess variances and the, the burden that, that would place on the property owner. But I believe that there's something else that we can address while, while going through these code changes, and that's townhome style development. And so, Washington has seen a fair amount of townhome style development over the past couple of years. I've, I've brought up a few examples here. The Villas along High Street, there's this subdivision off Fourteenth Street that has a few triplexes in it, and of course, the, the condos downtown along Front Street, those are also, you know, townhome style, where the, the owner owns the underlying land, and anyhow, all that to be, all, all that to say, there's, there's been a fair amount of townhome style development in Washington over the past twenty or so years. And the only way that you can do townhome style development is in the C three zoning district, or through the planned development residential process, which, you know, was, was how these, these two outside of downtown were done. And I, I believe that, you know, in terms of impacts, you know, allowing more than two owner-attached homes by right in R one C, R two would allow, is essentially the same in terms of impacts as existing. R one C development has similar density, transportation needs, and land use as a townhome style development. The only difference really is, you know, you just don't have that, that side yard. So you just have, you don't have the six, six-foot setback there. And then, another added benefit of allowing this by right would be, you would allow for increased affordable housing by right, you know, if you have smaller lot sizes, smaller homes, you have a lower sales price, because there's less to sell. So that would just be something to consider. And getting to the potential solutions, this is what I want to discuss with you all tonight. Option A is, you know, the most clear-cut here, you know, just change the current R one C zoning district, remove the lot coverage requirements, and drop the lot size down to anywhere between three thousand to four thousand five hundred square feet. This would remove the need for most variances when rezoning from R two to R one C. Option B is allowing that townhome style development in the R two district, and also allowing the, the current level of R ones, a, a, a single, it would allow for single-family attached homes in R two, as well as townhome style development. And then, that would be done by adding single-family attached housing as a permitted use, lowering the lot size in R two to three thousand square feet for single-family attached dwellings, and two-family dwellings to six thousand square feet, and removing the side setback. Option C is very similar to option B, but we just, there would be no, there would be no townhome style development. So we would keep the, we would transfer the side setback, the current side setback requirements for the R one C district to R two for a single-family attached housing, which is, you know, you're allowed to do a single-family attached, you're allowed to have a zero lot line setback if you have a six-foot setback on the other side. And that would only be for single-family attached. So, I guess with all that said, I would like to get your, get your feedback on this and see, you know, what you're, what you're comfortable with, and, yeah.
Aaron and I talked about this when he, when he presented, kept going through this. I think B gives you your greatest flexibility of what you can go ahead and do. You're allowing those single-family units to be permitted use, like, like Aaron said, by right in the R two zoning districts, so you don't have to. So, in essence, in some of those situations, they would not have to come to you to rezone the property, all they would have to do.
I forgot, correct, yeah, that, that's the advantage of allowing single-family attached in R two, is you would have, you would eliminate that need to rezone a lot of these duplexes.
So what would set the district apart, though, is that you would still allow duplexes to go ahead and be built, or two-family units to be built. So that would separate it from R one A, R one B, your single-family zoning district. But this, they would just, basically, to shorten this, hopefully, you know, with, with lowering the square footage, they don't have to go to the board of adjustment for variance. By allowing this by right with a single family, and I'm going with the B solution with, that, he talked about, by going with that, you don't have to go ahead and rezone the property. And basically, all they'd be coming to you with would be a subdivision plot. Now, keep in mind, if you have a zoning district map that kind of goes around, if you can pull that up, just keep in mind that a lot of them, when we came up with this, I think the concern and why they wanted to keep the, the square footage at that time, was they, I guess there was some concern about, yeah, that's fine to retrofit the existing development, but what if somebody comes in and wants to do that development? You know, or they want to take raw ground and go ahead and do that. I guess our concern is, we don't see that necessarily as a concern. I mean, I think this just gives, gives the diversity of housing and what you could go ahead and do, and like Aaron said, you could do that townhome style development where you have zero on each side. I mean, you may have, I mean, if you look at West Fifth Street, what was that development? It's on West Fifth Street, and it goes down the hill, and it's, it's right.
Oh, Birch, Birchwood.
Birchwood, thank you.
Get back south of the horn.
There you go, right there.
Yeah.
So those are all, but they had to do a planned development in order to get that approved. That's, that's what they had to go ahead and do. But if you, we anticipate you're going to see more of that style of, of development, and people are going to want that. So, that option B gives, this gives you this option to go ahead and allow this as a permitted use, and that's the difference between B and C.
And, and, just, just to note, with these, Birchwood Court could still not be built under the current, or what's, what's being proposed in R two, because these are like two thousand square foot lots. We're saying, you know, three thousand is probably a good, a good minimum, yeah.
And if you go back to the zoning district map, Aaron, thank you, you see all those areas in pink, I guess, for lack of.
Yeah, pink, yep.
That's all zoned R two, and most of those lots were built, especially on the west side of town where I live, it's, it's close to the shoe factory, those are all built with six thousand square foot lots, and they were encouraged to be two-family. So you have a lot of them there that are already six thousand, and if you cut it, now the difference, we were talking about this, but the difference with them is, they're not, you know, they're above and below type two-family units, not ranch-style horizontal type, you know, duplexes that you see on like Beaker Road, or some of the other places in town. But all of those lots, we see just about every single one of those, especially west of downtown, most of those lots are all six thousand square feet. So that's why that three thousand and six thousand makes sense.
Yeah, and like, these, these in here, I, I know for a fact, all required variances to rezone. The orange is R one C.
There's no way that you could go ahead and do those at that time, because of the fact that they, they didn't, the lots weren't that, that large. So that would cut out that, that additional board of adjustment variance, that's one thing, but it, this would also, option B would give you the opportunity to not even require them to rezone the property.
So if we would have that type of construction that would come in more than what we have now, does it, do you know how the building code addresses those type of structures when you put, you had a picture there a while ago, where there was four or five of them in a row?
Four or five in a row.
Two-story tall?
Yep.
Like, well, like that, I mean, you know, it's basically the same thing.
I mean, that was obviously built under a previous building code, but I mean.
I know there's different options now.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the developer has to go ahead and just get that firewall protection in between the, the units, just like they do today. You just, you're just going to have it on both sides.
Right, right.
And sometimes they may want to go ahead and even, I mean, it's not uncommon now, we're seeing it where they'll sprinkle the.
Sprinkle them, I know, that's, that's why I was mentioning that, because I think that's, otherwise, you know, you could have a conflagration go across there, and, and instead of just having two people, you know, out of a home, they've got.
Now, what you may have, though, is like on, where we're seeing development on the south side of town, either southwest, southeast, either way, if somebody would come in and want to go ahead and do that zoning district at that location, which, you really haven't seen too much of that. I mean, they've either done the planned development, or they've done the single-family.
Right.
Seventy-five hundred square foot homes, but.
I think there was.
Another option.
There was talk about out by Furnaces, though, that there, there was going to be a transition.
Yeah.
Out there, and, and at one time, there was talk about putting in some multifamily or duplexes or something there as a transition, so.
I feel like anything we can do to reduce the administrative burden of allowing homes like this to be built is a good thing, in my mind, lines to our plan, to create, you know, more entry-level housing, and honestly, is it the best use of our time to, you know, basically approve these changes, because it's not like they don't make sense? So we can just put in the code already, that it.
The only thing I can see is if somebody wants to propose that in a newer part of development, and I think that's the discussion for you all as a, as a group, to go ahead and make a recommendation, if, if, you know, you may get complaints from an existing single-family development, and if it's right next door, that they're down to six thousand, you know, square feet, three thousand per unit, I mean, you may get some pushback on that, but you can deal with those on a, you know, one-on-one basis. Or maybe that's when you steer them towards a PDR, where you've got some, you can put some buffers in, or something else to go ahead and help.
I've, I've got my fair share of experience with townhouses. It's a type of housing that I think our community needs. I think it's a density level that our community at some point needs. From that standpoint, I'm very much in favor of the idea, but I do think there's some issues with the fire and the building code that probably need to be discussed a little further, so we've got some, some clear language about size and access involved, because once we make it regulatory to the district, then it really doesn't come before us, right? It just, it's, it's allowed.
It's, it's built, yeah, it's a simple building, administrative building permit.
Exactly, so, I think there's some stuff there that, that needs to maybe be looked at as far as, as scale and, and access and things like that, that I, I think the fire chief is probably going to want to have some say in as it goes through.
I don't know how much discussion we've had with building codes on this issue.
Uh, I mean, you know, the, the building code is going to apply, I, they, they, you know, we have, we've had, you know, I, I guess I'll say that the Villas on High Street was built, or, well, it still is being built, you know, and that's, that's built to, you know, our current adopted building code and fire code, and there's, you know, a, a six-unit, a six-unit townhome that's going to go right here. I have a photo, I took a photo of it the other day.
That's all single fam, or single story.
Single, single-story, single-family attached.
Not that you don't still have the square footage there, but.
I think my, my, my bigger concern there really is just pure length of development of building.
Sure.
You know, because, like, when we did the ones on Front Street down there, you know, between Jefferson and, and Lafayette, you've got roughly two hundred and eighty feet, two hundred and eighty-six, something like that, feet of uninterrupted building.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And unless, and I haven't done one under the new building code, and my townhouses were done under previous codes, but the concern I have a little bit is, each one of those is, in the building code, is designed as a separate building.
Correct.
So, what limits a person, or do we want to limit, you know, is there a limit for how long?
Right.
That can be, that's, that's where I'm saying.
We talked about, yeah.
This is the discussion that I, I wanted to have, and I've, I've got some slides here to just talk about that, you know? So, this is a, this is kind of an extreme example, but this is in, you know, in, kind of the, the inner city of Denver, Colorado, and this is twenty attached single-family units, almost a whole block, you know? And we've got, at, at the top here, six attached single-family units, this is in Wintsville, I believe, and you got a whole, whole neighborhood of them, and then ten single-family attached Birch, Birchwood Court.
Which is in town.
So, I, you know, just to show you some different examples of the, you know, the, the mass of, you know, these, this, this style of development, and, you know, if you had any, if you had any thoughts about that, so.
And if you want to see a couple of examples, local, obviously, I mentioned the townhomes on, on Front Street there. Another example is the, the Willows off of Fifth Street by the Car Wash.
Yes.
One of those buildings is.
Yeah, you're right, I think it's.
Is ten units.
Is it ten? I didn't know if it was eight or ten.
Eight foot wide, so, that's a two hundred and eighty foot long residence, essentially.
That's, that's this, is that this right here?
Yes, yes.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess, you know, that, that is, that is a question that I, I do want to discuss with you all, is, you know, what, what, what does, what do you, as the commission, feel comfortable as allowing by right?
Maximum number of units.
Versus, you know, having, making them go through a PDR?
I mean, from my perspective, you know, I think we can see it in town. The, the townhouses on Front Street are almost a, a city block, they're almost three hundred feet. Me personally, I start struggling when I, a little bit with scale, when I start getting above that dimension, when I start thinking about four hundred foot long, you know, or something like. when I start thinking about four hundred foot long, you know, or something like that. I, I start to, I start to think the scale maybe is getting away from us a little bit.
Yeah, that's, that development rate, there was a P D, it was a planned development.
Yep.
Yes. I think that was the only way that you could do that type of development.
So have you talked to building department Blake and got his input into this at all?
Yeah, I don't think, well, I guess the thing was, is that we didn't see it as, well, well, let's just go back to, you know, the simple ones where the people have got a condo and they want to divide it up. That's never been an issue. That's not a bit, I mean, it's, it's, the, the buildings are built. It's, that's, that's just more of a financing issue.
We're opening up the door now that.
But I don't know, we can, we can talk with Blake or whatever and see what, what input that they have. If the codes have changed, that would, that would, you know, and I would say the, the one thing, when Aaron and I were talking about this was possibly just limiting maybe the number of units together or, and/or maybe a, a length.
Or a number of units.
And just say, you know what, this is, if you want to go beyond this, you're gonna have to get a variance or whatever, you know, or go the P D R route.
Then it becomes a, a more of a density issue at that point.
Correct.
I would, I would feel more comfortable with that.
We'll definitely do that. We'll talk with them and see what the building codes and what requirements that they would have or whatever. But I mean, like I said, just based on what, everything that Aaron's researched and looked into, I just, I think that B route is the way for us to kind of go. And we can put some limitations on the items that you addressed. But we'll check into that.
Perfect. Great. Well.
Thank you.
I'll come back to you next month with something. So.
Well, and we've got time, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that.
We're not in a hurry.
We need to think this through and make sure.
We've been doing it for eight years, so.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions, Aaron? I was remiss in saying anything earlier. And Ken, I apologize for welcoming, not welcoming you to our first meeting tonight. There was a lot going on at the beginning, and I forgot to make a note until I got to the end. So welcome. Pleasure to have you here with us.
Thank you.
Welcome to the dream team.
Hearing, I don't have anything else on the agenda, so I would entertain one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn at eight twelve. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Jane. See, you're already contributing all to you.
Why, that's why we wanted.
I read my homework.
Right. And I got somebody else looking out for our stuff too. Kinda, from a different perspective.